Call the order and roll call.
Commissioner DeBries?
Here.
Commissioner Frederickson?
Here.
Commissioner Goss?
Here.
Commissioner Hunsicker? Commissioner Keith?
Here.
Commissioner McCoy?
Here.
Commissioner Shores?
Here.
We've got a quorum.
We all stand for the pledge allegiance of Ms. Shores, will you guide us please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excited. Well, I'd like to welcome our new members Charmaine Keith.
Thank you.
Scott McCoy. And Elizabeth Goss, welcome aboard. Looking forward to all your ideas along mingling with ours and be a good marriage. And then I guess up is election of Chair and Vice Chair for 2018.
Terry.
It's thoroughly. Any nominations? I'll put my name out there for Chair if...
I'll second that.
Anybody?
And I'm gonna put my nomination out there for Terry to be Vice Chair.
No. Not a good call.
Sitting there anyways.
I made it back around the time to get no.
I would like to make a nomination for Second Chair. I would like to nominate Lori.
It's one of those things where I just don't know if I have enough time on the...
So, you nominated yourself for the Chair?
No, I just threw my name out there.
Okay, and Terry seconded it.
I second it.
And I nominate Lori for Second.
I think that sounds like a fine selection.
No, I don't.
I do too.
I do too. I think that'd be excellent.
Give me a motion.
I have an issue with that, I think you would make a better one.
Yes, no. I have, seriously, I have some things I prefer settled down professionally out there to make sure before making that commitment, so... Might be future years, might be an opportunity, but I don't think this year is probably a good one, what we're trying to do out there.
I don't know if I have enough experience.
You already said on the county.
I know, I know, I do want that.
I think that'd be okay from a Vice position, I wouldn't be so concerned about experience from that spot. I think that that seat's gotta have some knowledge, and I think Gary, I mean Gary by far has the most knowledge out of any of us sitting here, up here right now. So I think from that perspective, I think that's a good selection there.
I agree.
And then, I really think anybody from the next standpoint could get some experience from sitting from the second-hand seat and then have an opportunity to be considered for future roles.
From a Vice Chair standpoint, I think that, you know, somebody with experience on the commissions that you've had with the county would be a strong candidate for Vice Chair.
Okay.
I would actually recommend that we vote Terry Shores in as a Vice Chair.
I'll second that.
You don't have to have to allow us to do all the talking over on this.
Well, I mean, I don't even know anybody, so, yay. Oh, go ahead.
Okay, so you guys gonna finish your motions then?
So do we have a motion for...
Sure, I'll make a motion to nominate Gary for Chair for the Committee for 2018.
I second that.
And Ms. Shores for Vice Chair for...
And I second that.
For 2018.
All in favor?
All in favor, or a vote?
Yes, all in favor.
All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed?
Was there a second?
Yes, Lori seconded it.
Lori seconded both of them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just make sure you're here.
Okay, the approval of minutes of the regular meeting minutes of December 12th, 2017. Do we have any changes, are we all in favor?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from last meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, call to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the Commission should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. Is there any comments? All righty, pass council action.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, and welcome aboard our new Commission members. Welcome, hope you enjoy it. The past council action, there were three items in front of the, that went in front of the Council from your meeting in December. The first item was allowing tattoo shops by conditional use permit in the Iowa zoning district, that was approved by the Council. Second item was on removing the requirement that double-faced signs not be less than 30 inches apart for calculating the sign area and allowing 60-foot-high signs in commercial subdivisions when they are within the interstate corridor. That was also approved by the Council. And finally, the last item, which was the removal of the section on condominiums from the subdivision ordinance, that was also approved by the Council. Oh, and the final item, sorry. The Council approved Ms. Keith to serve on the Commission along with our other new Commissioners from the previous meeting in December.
Congratulations, welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Old business, there is an old business. New business, zoning ordinance text amendment case Z-018-001. A city initiated request for a text amendment to Section 31.000. Amendments and zone changes of the zoning ordinance of the City of Kingman. The request is to amend subsection 31-600 protest provisions in regards to requirements for the calculation of legal protest areas as amended by the Arizona revised statute.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, this is an amendment to Section 31.600 protest provision concerning the calculation of the legal protest area when we have items that are protested by the public. This is a city-initiated text amendment. The reason for this amendment is the Arizona revised statutes 9-462.01 was amended in last year, and this subsection follows that statute, so it necessitates us to do a text amendment. Currently, Section 31.600 addresses the requirement for a supermajority, three-fourths vote by the City Council for approval of a zoning action if a written protest is received from certain surrounding property owners. The text of the, of the section is based upon, as I said, the Arizona revised statutes 9-462.04, which is applicable to all Arizona municipalities. Statute was changed by House Bill 2116 in 2007, so we do need to do the text amendment. Under the current ordinance, the calculation for written protest area includes those owners representing at least 20 percent of all property within 150 feet of any side of the boundary of a rezoning action, exclusive of any rights of way, of any streets. The revised statute states that the calculation includes 20 percent of all property by both area and number of lots, tracts, and condo units within a defined zoning area. And that defined zoning area includes all property within 150 feet of the boundary of the rezoning action, including the right-of-way and the property that's actually subject to the rezoning action. So, and for those of you that were at the conference in October, you might recall that map. The way it would be calculated now, I can kind of explain how it would have been done in the past, it was fairly simple. Oops. Just turned it off, turned it off. Sorry. Picked up the wrong one. We'll point you at this one then.
One side's on, one off.
We'll come back on in a minute. So, in the past, what we did is we calculated the, we looked at the properties on any side of a rezoning case. So in this case, this large parcel here, P, is the, is the property being rezoned. I'm not sure why it's not coming on. So, in order to be a, consider a legal protest, anybody on any side of this property, once you reach 20 percent on any side, you meet, you met the threshold for a protest. Now, under the new requirements, it's, you have to calculate the area of the site itself, plus the rights-of-way, which are in yellow here, plus all areas within 150 feet of the site, determine what 20 percent of that is, and then that gives you the, what the threshold is for the legal protest. So it's a little different than what we, what we previously had done. The other change is that a three-fourths supermajority vote of the Council in the past was five and a quarter out of seven votes. Since there is no such thing as a quarter, quarter of a vote, it meant that six out of seven Council members had to vote in the affirmative if a zoning case was to be passed, if it was protested. Now, under the revised statutes, it still says three-fourths fraction, however, they round it to the nearest whole number. So now, only five out of seven Council members would have to vote to approve the rezoning. However, the required vote shall not be less than the majority of the full Council. So if there were four Council members present who were able to vote, then all four would have to, have to vote in favor because four is, is a majority of the Council. If there were five present, then four out of five would have to vote in favor. If there were six that were present, then five out of six would have to vote in favor, which is how it is today. The final change is that protests must be filed either with the City Clerk or the City Development Services Office by 5:00 PM of the day preceding the Council meeting. That's, that's the current ordinance. The revised statute states that the protest must be filed with the City Clerk's office, no later than 12:00 noon, one business day before the Council hearing, or at a date or time that's specified by the governing bodies. So the Council could pick an earlier time and day if they wanted to, but that's the latest that we can accept it by statute. So, our recommendation is to make changes to our section to correspond with the state statutes, and that is shown in Attachment A. I won't read all of that, but this is the changes that are proposed. Language mirrors that of the statute. With that, I'll try and answer any questions you might have.
I think you already covered us, this was that opening session of the Planning and Zoning Conference.
Yes, the very first one we went to.
Extensively, so I, I think we talked, it'd probably be something we would come back and take a look at, making sure that our current zoning language was updated to what the updated Arizona statutes. I don't have any issues with it, it was pretty straight, well, I guess it was semi-straightforward on how they did the calculation, the examples they gave, but...
Still confusing.
Yeah. But I did read through the language that you had on there, it matches, so I don't have any issues with it.
Because I read through it too.
Looked pretty straightforward to me.
Thanks.
Do I open that up to comment to the public, Richard?
Yeah, it says the public here, it says yes.
Any comment or input from the public? Please state your name.
Wes Maroney. I have a question. I was looking in the revised code, the reverse one said that they had till 5:00 o'clock the day after the hearing, right? And now the new one says 12:00 of the day of the hearing. Is that...
What it said is protest must be filed, the current ordinance says it must be filed by 5:00 PM of the day preceding the Council meeting.
Right.
And now, the state statute, which is what we would be mirroring in the ordinance, would say it would be one business day before the Council hearing. So it's still the same, same as far as the day is concerned, it's just the hours would be moved up.
Well, what I was questioning...
By five hours.
All right, what I was questioning is if this is the City Council meeting, and I came before the City Council meeting, and they voted against me, or, you know, whatever, wouldn't I have the opportunity to put a protest in the next day? How could I protest at noon before the hearing, and I didn't hear anything was going on? That was my concern.
Right, so the way it would work, and if you don't mind, I'll just kind of address the Commission and your question. So, the, again, this is, this is a protest that would be filed before the Council's hearing. So, your hearing is usually three weeks roughly before the Council hearing. So, you know, at those meetings, sometimes we do have a pretty good idea whether there's gonna be opposition or not. So the, I would say the property owners would have an idea from the Commission's action, which way you're gonna go as far as your recommendation. And if they wish to protest it, then they would have to have the written protest in at least no later than noon, one business day, so it would be the Monday before the Council meeting. They'd have to turn it in. If it's turned in after the Council's hearing, it's, it's, it's too late except it can be referred. There is what's called a referendum process, which is totally different.
So basically, in a nutshell, what you're saying is if somebody wants to oppose what this Commission has moved on to counsel, they have to get that into the Clerk's office the next, the business day prior to the actual Council meeting.
Council hearing, right.
Okay.
And so, and after the Council action, the only way to stop a rezoning cases by, through the referendum process, which is a different process.
Basically, if you don't like what we have to say, you have a couple of weeks to get it into them.
Yeah, no, he's, he's, please agree what I understand.
Okay, any discussion amongst this members?
I think it's good.
Make a motion?
I second it. Did you first it?
Who made the motion?
I make a motion that we go ahead and accept what Rich has revised.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ready, passed. All right, new business B, zoning ordinance text amendment case Z-018-0002. Assistant, city-initiated request for a text amendment to Section 12-000, Commercial Community Business C2 of the zoning ordinance of the City of Kingman. Request is to amend Section 12-210, permitted uses, to clarify that single-family dwellings are not permitted within the C2, Commercial Community Business, and C3, Commercial Service Business zoning districts.
Good evening, again, this is a text amendment to Section 12 dash, I'm sorry, 12.210, the C2 district permitted uses. It's a clarification on dwelling units as permitted uses in that zoning district. This is a city-initiated text amendment, and the intent is to try to clarify that single-family dwellings are not permitted uses in the C2 or C3 zoning districts. Staff recommendation is for approval of the amendment, see in Attachment A. Section 12.210 lists all permitted uses in the C2 district, which also includes all permitted uses in the C1 district. Permitted uses include, among many other things, dwelling units, including lodging rooms constructed to conform to R2 district densities. Also, low-density multiple-family and medium-density multiple-family are listed in the C2 district. Section 2 in the ordinance provides definitions for various terms, and that's in your, in your staff report, but for the terms dwelling units, dwelling attached, dwelling commercial, dwelling multiple-family, dwelling single-family detached, and family. And then finally, subsection 4.300 describes the density requirements of the low and medium-density zoning districts, the R2 and R3 zoning districts. So, how this came about is staff was approached by a, someone that wanted to obtain a building permit to construct a single-family residence on a vacant downtown lot that happened to be rezoned, happened to be zoned C2, although it was in an area that was mostly residential. Their first initial response was, no, it's not permitted in C2. They came back with, with a, basically, analysis of all our, all our definitions, which I get into in the staff report. We took a look at that with the city attorney, and the determination was essentially a loophole existed in our zoning ordinance that would allow a single-family detached dwelling to be constructed in C2 or C3, because anything allowed in C2 is also allowed in C3. And the issue is that really the broad definition of dwelling units that we have in our zoning ordinance. And that definition includes a house for an occupancy by one family, which essentially is the same as the definition for a single-family detached dwelling, occupancy for one family. So, determination was dwelling unit includes a single-family dwelling. So due to that allowance, and the fact that we also allow multiple-family development in C2, as far as mirroring essentially the R2 and R3 zoning districts, you could have a variety of different types of dwellings in C2. The intent of the C2 district is really not for single-family homes, but we do allow multiple-family development. And continuing to allow single-family dwellings in C2 really would not, we would not, we would recommend that. It also would make the non-conforming section that you just recently updated essentially moot, because you could build a house in C2. So, that's why we need to address this before it goes too much further. Hopefully, this is the only time it comes up. So the staff is recommending that the text amendment be approved. That would explicitly exclude single-family dwelling units from this district, and by extension, the C3 district. So we're recommending the language in Attachment A in your packet, and this is what it looks like. It just would take out the term lodging rooms, because that, that really has more to do with motels and hotels, and we've already allowed that in C2. So I've scratched that out and would include the new language, not including single-family detached dwellings constructed to conform to the property development requirements of R2 or R3, which is already allowed elsewhere in the zoning district. So, that would be the single change that we would recommend. And with that, I'll try and answer any questions you might have.
I have a question.
Sure.
Was that building permit issued for the single-family C2s?
It was issued about a little over a month ago, but it hasn't been any construction yet.
I think, as you and I discussed the other day, by amending this and approving it, we pretty much lock up where the, where the individual wants to build the house, and after that, won't be any...
Right, and it'd be the one, and then they would be having a non, they'd have a non-conforming residence in C2. Just it would be a new one instead of like an old one, like the ones that are out there right now.
Right.
I have a question.
Sure.
So about how many homes would you say in C, that are single-family dwellings in a C2 right now for, like, do you have an estimate?
I don't know that we have a...
Count?
A good estimate, mostly it's in the downtown area.
Okay.
Along like Oak Street and Beal and some of that area.
So if someone, their grandfathered, if they already have that, obviously, right, is that correct?
Yeah, they're called, we call them non-conforming uses, but it's the same grandfathered, just kind of...
I wanted to find out, if someone has that, now what happens when they come to ask to get a permit? What happens with them, if they wanna build something, add something on, or what happens when they come to get a permit? Because we had an issue in the past where they didn't approve it, because now they weren't conforming, and they couldn't, they were limited, and I, I was concerned because, you know, they were there before that.
Right, so we do allow expansions of non-conforming residences in, in the commercially-zoned areas by conditional use permit. So that would be the process they would have to go through. The one thing that we did change in the non-conforming section is how we deal with them if, when, if they're destroyed by fire or other cause. And before, it was, if it was more than 50 percent destroyed, it couldn't be rebuilt. And now it's essentially all, all single-family residents can be rebuilt, provided they are, they'll expand beyond the existing building envelope of what was there previously.
Right, they don't usually...
That's what we just changed.
That's what we just changed, yes.
We just changed that.
I was just wondering, like, how difficult is it, I mean, with that, so they have to get approval. They have to get a...
Conditional use permit would go through this body for, for recommendation, then go onto the Council for approval. If, for example, they want to expand the residence, or they wanted to build a garage, or something like that, that wasn't there already.
Yeah, I think my concern was that, that now they have to go through more of a process because of the zoning changes. I was like, is this, you know, I don't, kind of like, I'm just wondering if it, are they being penalized in a way, you know what I mean? Because I'm, I'm just question, I'm just wondering, because I went through this with a client downtown, and they weren't granted.
Right, yeah, we're not changing anything in regards to the non-conformity issue. This is strictly about whether we would allow new, new single-family homes in the C2 districts, yeah.
I was just a question, I was just wondering that, because it's something we went through.
Right.
Rich, is it fair to say... What's the cost of a conditional use permit if someone did want to expand an existing home in a C2?
It's $500 to make the application.
If it was a conforming use, that $500 would not be an issue.
Right, there's just a matter of continuing building permit.
So in, in essence, they are being penalized for having the house in C2, assuming that they wanted to expand it at some point in time, by having to pay that $500 fee that would not be charged if they were in conforming use.
That's true, although that's not the subject of this particular text amendment. This, that issue is unaffected by this, this is strictly about...
That's for another time.
Right.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you, Richard.
Thanks.
Any comment from the public? None? Any, any more input from the members here?
Make a motion to approve it.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, new business C, annual report luncheon. Consideration of setting a date and terminating a location for the Planning and Zoning Commission in 2017 annual report luncheon. Well...
I'd like to make, to make a recommendation for February the 19th at the Chop House for the luncheon. That's kind of far for you.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine. That was when I got my speeding ticket on last year.
Oh, yeah.
Plan no better this year.
They have a private room there?
Um, they can segregate it, put us to the side. I don't know if it's actually, it's not a wall, but we've had it there before, so...
What day of the week is that?
It's a Monday.
Monday? It's a Monday?
Yeah, and it's a day off of school.
Was that President's Day? President's Day?
President's Day?
I think it is, yeah.
We won't be here. That's not a good day.
Yeah, I'd say that's not going to work for the county.
Okay.
I'm fine with that location. I'm...
I'm fine with the location.
Okay, let's change the date.
What's a good date for everybody?
I work all the time, so whenever.
How soon do you want to do it?
I was just gonna, yeah, the annual report, we're just starting it, so...
You're just starting it, so you're looking at probably towards the end of February?
That sounds really good.
Let's go to the source here. I'd say, you know, like, the twenty-first, twenty-second, twenty-eighth, the first of March, whatever, you know.
Would March be better, Sandy?
No, I don't think we need... February.
The twenty-first or the twenty-fifth, I'm going to be in Texas, so the twentieth...
Through the twenty-fifth?
The week after that.
Yeah, so the twentieth would work, or the next week.
Why don't you do the twenty, or the twenty-eighth? Twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth, Wednesday, does Tuesday or Wednesday work better for you?
That'd be bad. I'll be in Texas that week.
You'll be in Texas that week?
That week is not good.
What about the thirteenth of February?
They want, no, staff would like a no, or their staff has a no for the thirteenth, I think.
Well, maybe not.
Yeah. Can we do the twentieth of February?
I think you listed in here, the staff would suggest holding, but not on the sixth or the thirteenth.
What about the twentieth of February?
How is that with you, Sandy?
That works for me. That's what I was thought, I wasn't going to be here that time.
Off the twenty-first?
Yeah, is, I was gonna...
Hey, I'll be in Texas that day.
She's out the twenty-first.
For that week, I was gonna go to Phoenix with my family for those four days, the night, four, nineteenth.
Is the end of the month?
That's perfect. Perfect.
Richard, is...
What?
Is the end of the month better for everybody?
The end of this month?
No, February.
I thought somebody else was going to be gone, the twenty-sixth, you're gone.
But the twenty-seventh is fine.
What about the twenty-seventh?
Yeah, Monday, the twenty-seventh, they'll be okay.
Monday, the twenty-sixth, or Tuesday, the twenty-seventh of February?
How about Monday?
Monday, the twenty-sixth?
Okay, I'll second that.
With my business, I don't know where I am from one minute to the next, so it doesn't really matter to me.
Okay, Monday, the twenty-sixth, and at the...
The Chap House?
I'll call and make reservations.
What time?
What time do you folks want to do it? Eleven-thirty, twelve?
Tell me, and I'll arrange it.
Eleven-thirty probably would be a matter...
Yeah. Should I make sure they have a private, a separate room for us, or...
They have, like, it's like you walk in, and there's like, it's like the lounge area, and then the restaurant, so they really don't have a barrier wall to, like, a private room, so...
Do we need a private room?
We don't need, do we?
Just near that we can all congregate, you know.
Have it sectioned off.
Chap House doesn't have anything like that over there. And it's loud over there.
It is loud. Do you want to go back to the Dan Bar?
You guys get to decide.
We did at the Dan Bar last year, and they put us off to the one side.
Do they have that one room? People like Indian food, they have a private room at Indian Spice and Bar.
Open for anything.
About the garlic clove, do they have a private room still?
We had it there last time.
Oh, I know. I don't know. They have a barbecue restaurant that's opening at the end of the month. They're doing a grand opening, and it has a conference room. Remember where Misseritas was? They're doing a smoked barbecue restaurant there.
You might be able to get your Bali to give you the room.
Just so I let you know.
But whatever, whatever works.
Open for anything.
Does the sixty-six Lounge have a private room?
They do.
Is it large enough?
Yeah.
Canyon sixty-six, they have a private room.
We had it there a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
It's pretty good.
You want to do it there?
It's up to you, folks. This is like your thank you.
Well, where was it? Last year, was that the Dan Bar?
Last year was the Dan Bar.
We had to, yeah, we had to, I think, maybe go somewhere else, just to spread it around the community. I'm all...
This is for you folks, thanking you, actually, so...
Any other ideas? Are we missing anybody in town?
Even Chili's doesn't have anything. Anybody downtown?
El Plasio, they have that, they have that back room.
Deribaldi might do it, I don't know.
Yeah.
Deribaldi's? Does he have a private room?
No, but he may just like lock the door and say, here you go. Sometimes he does that.
I hate to say it, they have him shut down business for us for an hour.
Yeah, and I don't know that he would, so...
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we go to Canyon sixty-six.
Got a second?
I'll second it. Because I know they have a big enough room, because we did committees in there for...
Canyon sixty-six, Monday, the twenty-sixth, eleven-thirty.
Sounds good.
That works for everybody? Eleven-thirty.
Is that the one right by forty?
Yes.
On the line. Yeah, it's across from the Spring Hill Suites, it's on the other side, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, okay, okay, sure.
You have that one settled?
Excellent.
Okay, commissioners' comments, limited to announcements, availability, attendance at conferences and seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings, and requests for reports from staff.
Rich, I know, I think we mentioned at the end of the last one, first off, welcome back. Nice to see Ms. Kress sitting over there for a familiar face. We had talked about, and I saw council pass the sign, we had a lot of discussion at the last meeting around the sign, and we, I think you were going to potentially look into a CUP process to incorporate that as part of signs going forward. Is that still on your guys' docket, to be looking into that, or no?
Well, we could, I guess I would need some guidance as to what type of signs you just want to see by the initial use. I mean, is there a specific type of sign that you want to review or this?
Vic, I think questioning, when that went through council, did it only pass based on the fact that they're putting a big Jumbotron on it, and they're going to use it for local event stuff, kind of?
It passed because it is a sign that is being reworked, and because of the location where it's going to be, it's not going to really stand that high above what the ordinance is now, and it's going to promote local events, as you just said.
Okay, all right.
And didn't we pass something, too, that not everyone could put up a tall sign like this? That it has to be so many acreage on the frontage before, okay.
So, Rich, you're looking for more guidance, instead of just blanket saying all signs have a CUP process, as to look at what specifically, yeah, okay. I'll come back to you on that one.
Isn't that up your alley, Mr. McCoy?
I have a lot of history with Kingman sign ordinance, yes, and that was my next question. When was the last time that has been gone through?
A full review?
Yes.
It's been many years.
Ten years, at least.
Isn't it on your list to do, though? Yes.
And as well, we do have to address in particular our temporary sign ordinance because of recent Supreme Court cases that have made it so that we have to redo it. Although, as I said last...
That came up here at our conference.
Taking, taking the time, because there's still some pending litigation that may be addressed, and we may, we have to go back and redo it again, so we kind of...
So currently, the CUP process for a sign such as the hotels is not a pressing issue, simply because I don't see any other permits being pulled right now for...
No, I think what is, there is no CUP process around that. If that sign hadn't been one that was going to be outside of, require a variance to allow it to go up, there would be no review of a sign. It would just come in, process the permit, the city would go right through. And I think that's where, I actually enjoyed the discussion we had on the back and forth on that, but we, or well, I think we felt like it wouldn't be bad, given the aesthetics of it, and how visible that's going to be for people coming through, it wouldn't be bad to have an additional layer, level of review on ones, not to, not to hold things up or get in the way, but just to make sure that what's going up is, in general, consistent with what we would be like to see going forward with, for the community. So we're asking, we were, just had a brief thought of potentially adding a CUP process, so there's an extra layer of review. But I get where Rich is coming from in terms of, you know, I consider and say highway signs, highway visible signs at that point, but I'd like to go back and read that portion of the order, again, and see if I can't, maybe by next meeting, give you a little more guidance on what specific areas be looking at that, too.
Something to talk about in the context of the overall sign code.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, man.
I think we had a lot of the same concerns as I think Mrs. Kress had, and some of the city council about, and I brought it up, about potential of other businesses popping up these signs, but at the cost of this one particular sign, and I imagine other signs, if, if they had the potential to do it, would, I'm guessing, half of what, the one that's going in, but still, it's pretty cost prohibitive to...
I should add that another reason it was passed was because, first of all, Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval, and based on all of the discussions and reviews that you had prior to it getting to council.
Yeah, we hammered that one pretty good.
We did good.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. If it, I don't, I think it's like an emergency situation, anything like that, that has to be done tomorrow, but if, if it's part of a broader review of the, over the overall sign ordinance, I'm fine with that.
At the, at the conference, Flagstaff was kind of stood out in the signs part of it. Can we get some more information on how they set their, their sign codes up?
Very good.
He kept it really simple.
Yeah.
That would be one of the, you know, one of the, we would want to look at other areas and how they're addressing that, the issue of temporary signs, so certainly Flagstaff would be one of the ones.
Okay, that was a good one. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I had one other, now that we have three new commission members, I know one thing that at least worked that I appreciated was the orientation presentation. So is that something that we need to request from you to do again, or is that already in place?
We could, we, yeah, we could do that maybe at the next meeting. Probably something to...
Pretty light, yes.
But we'll pencil it in for next month. We don't have a really long meeting.
Make a motion for adjournment?
Second.